Night, we're going to.
Mike.
Hey, Mike, you want to take that outside or do you want to? Two mics.
Mike.
We're gonna start this, we'd like to welcome to this special county commission meeting this Monday, the ninth day of October two thousand twenty-three, and we've asked John Whitaker, our clerk, to offer an invocation, and Shalon Shaver will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Father in heaven, we are grateful to be gathered tonight. We are grateful to live in this favorable land. We pray that thou will guide our discussions tonight and help everyone to make the points that they brought to this meeting. We pray that we can discuss the topics with respect and civility. We pray that thou wilt watch over and protect our land, and we pray that thou will bless those who are suffering because of war at this time particularly, and also those who are suffering from drought or fear. We pray that thou wilt bless, continue to bless Iron County. We are so grateful to live here. We pray that thou will help us now to conduct this meeting well, and we say it and ask these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John and Shalon. Appreciate that. So, let me just kind of outline the way we're gonna do the meeting tonight. If you look at your agenda, there's a, the first is a public hearing, and I doubt whether that'll affect many of you. It might, but I doubt whether it will. Following that public hearing, I'll open that and close it, and then we'll have, we'll have our sheriff, Ken Carpenter, and Commissioner Blake have a presentation to make. Those of us, others up here, will answer, you know, be here to answer questions as well. Following their presentation, we'll have a public meeting to hear arguments for and against the issuance of this proposed bond. And so that's kind of how the meeting will go. We will not time comments. You're welcome to speak as you like. I, so, right now, we'll go ahead and, you know, I'll read this first item. This is a public hearing regarding the issuance of not more than eighty-nine million nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of general obligation bonds, and B, the potential economic impact that the improvements, facilities, or properties to be financed in whole or part with proceeds of said bonds will have on this private sector. So. And we're, oh, then.
Sorry, Paul, go ahead.
You're good. So, they're just working on some technical, technical issues right now, but, so if there's anybody in the audience that would like to talk about maybe economic impacts you will have on, on any business you have, or potential, if you're, if you have your own private detention center in your backyard, or whatever that is, this is, this is what this, this first agenda item's about. So, this isn't part of the comment period. This is just, so I'll go ahead and open the public hearing regarding this. If you have a comment, if you could approach the microphone, and our Jeannie has asked, our assistant has asked if you'll write, last time we had a hard time hearing, and so if you'll write your name on the clipboard and then state your name as well, she can keep track in the minutes of who, who has made comments. So, is there anybody would like to speak to this first public hearing? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and we'll go to the public appointments section of the agenda, and we'll turn the time over to our sheriff, Ken Carpenter, and Commissioner Blake.
Is that hot?
Yep.
Nope.
I'm gonna come where the lights aren't killing me, where I can actually see you guys in the audience and, and talk a little bit easier. So, I'm gonna take a few minutes and just give you a lot of, I see a lot of familiar faces. A lot of you have been here before and probably heard this. I'm gonna just give you a history since I've been on the commission of this project. So, I came onto the commission in two thousand sixteen. When I came onto the commission, Sheriff Mark Gower was the sheriff here. One of our first meetings, Mark came and said, "Look, we've got to have a new jail." We, you know, are you, you know, you're the new commissioner. Are you willing to talk about this? Just a little bit about my history. I've been a law enforcement officer here in Iron County now, going on twenty-eight years. Started with the Iron County Sheriff's Office, spent a couple of years there, spent about twenty-three years with the Cedar City Police Department. My, my specialties there were child abuse, sex abuse, and medical legal death investigation. So, I've had a lot of opportunity to take people to jail over the years. For the last four and a half plus, a little bit, I've been with Enix City Police Department. So, kind of familiar with the law enforcement end of things. At the time when we started looking to see if we, I said, "Well, obviously, you know, I guess, do we need a new jail?" I booked a lot of people and go into booking and leave and don't spend a whole lot of time in the rest of the jail. But Sheriff Gower said, "Let me show you some stuff." And at that point, Deputy Mike Gibbs, who, he'll probably be available, he will be available for some questions tonight. I've known Mike for many years. We both got into law enforcement about the same time, and our careers have spent a lot of time together. Mike said, "Let me show you some things," and started to show me some of the maintenance concerns at the jail, started to show me leaky roofs and doors that were rusted through, a lot of other things. The other conversation that we had at that time was just the, the ability to house inmates, the ability to, basically, the room that we had to house these inmates. So, it became really apparent really quickly that we needed a new jail. Started to work with Commissioner Brinkerhoff and Commissioner Adams at that point to start to have this, this conversation in earnest. The other thing that happened in two thousand sixteen was we got a new auditor. Dan Jesson became the auditor for the Iron County conservative, conservative bookkeeping and conservative spending and budgeting over the years. We were able to pay off our, pay off our, all of our fund balances. So, we weren't, I mean, we're out of debt as far as the county goes. At that point, because you can't carry, you can't just stockpile money in the county, it has to be, has to be earmarked for something. Knowing that we were gonna need a new jail, we started to put away money from that fund balance. We were able to put away, between two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and twenty, we were able to put away about ten million dollars in that fund, basically as a down payment fund. Two thousand twenty, we got slapped with COVID. Everybody knows that that turned the world upside down. As we went into COVID, well, before even COVID, we started to look at property for the jail. We looked at, we am, asked their, one of their programs to do a feasibility study for us. We talked about the need for infrastructure. We talked about the need for availability and proximity to the hospital. We talked about proximity to the courts. We talked about accessibility from other agencies, because as the county, constitutionally, we have to provide that jail facility for all of the law enforcement in Iron County, which is Bryanhead, Parowan, SUU, Cedar City, Bryanhead, did I say Bryanhead? Anyway.
Enix.
Highway Patrol.
Highway Patrol, Enix. We have to provide law, we have to provide jail for all of those people. And it's important, because when you think about Bryanhead, Bryanhead has seven full-time officers right now. At any given time, especially in the evening and late afternoon, or late evening hours, there's generally one marshal on duty in Bryanhead. So, for that guy to bring somebody to jail here in Cedar City, takes them away from their community for at least a couple of hours, if not at least three hours. So, we've got to have the jail within pretty close proximity so that it's feasible for these other agencies to bring and book people into jail when they need to. So, those are kind of the parameters that we gave to look at in this feasibility study. Now, we had, we looked at property north of Enix. We looked at property out by the landfill. We looked at pro, several properties kind of spread throughout the valley in Cedar City, or in the Cedar Valley. We even contemplated a.
Properties kind of spread throughout the valley in Cedar City, or in the Cedar Valley. We even contemplated a, properties kind of spread throughout the valley in Cedar City, or in the Cedar Valley. We even contemplated a property kind of spread throughout the valley in Cedar City, or in the Cedar Valley. We even contemplated a.
That's about the time of COVID.
We even contemplated.
During COVID, that's about the federal government issued ARPA. Basically, the government gave us a whole bunch of money. It's not necessarily money, you know, when it came to, when it came to getting those funds from the federal government, we spent a lot of time and effort to figure out how we could make those funds do the very best for our community. The vast majority of those funds were put into small business grants alone, make businesses open when the world shut down. You know, we in Iron County did a great job of not closing down. We did our very best to support small business. We did our very best to keep our folks safe with, with hand sanitizer and gloves, things like that. But there was an additional, about ten million dollars, that came to the county that could be used for capital projects that would ultimately combat COVID. You know, our jails were a huge issue nationwide as far as the transmission of COVID. So, for us to add that ten million dollars to the ten million dollars that we had already stockpiled, brought our total up to about twenty million dollars between money that we've been able to set aside from our fund balance, as well as those ARPA funds from the federal government. So, skip ahead to about twenty nineteen. No, that's a lie. We're already past twenty nineteen. It's been a long day. About two years ago, I'm saying in earnest, about two years ago. Now, we're, we're looking at starting the design process. We're really looking in earnest to find the property. We drove all over the county. We talked to lots of different property owners. We did lots of things to try and figure out where the best place to put this facility would be. We ended up, first of all, with a property adjacent to Smeed, on about the corner of Highway fifty-six and Lund. We went so far there, there looked like there may be some competition for that property. We went so far there as to pay some earnest money to lock up that property to determine if that was going to be the best, the best place. Once we had that property locked up, we had, we had pushback from local neighborhoods and such, and we really did our due diligence to figure out if that was truly the best property or not. Part of that was soils testing, to figure out just what we were dealing with as far as construction costs, if that was gonna be a feasible place, if we had the, if we had the infrastructure there. And ultimately, what we found is the soil there wasn't great. That's kind of the, kind of where the floodwaters end, kind of in the flood plain, and we would have had to overex about twelve feet in order to build the foundation back up to where it could hold a facility that weighed that much. And so, it was very cost prohibitive to move forward with that site. And an interesting thing happened. Each time that, each time we went through this process, when we picked that site, there weren't really any other, I mean, we'd looked at a whole bunch of other sites, but nothing really, there wasn't anything awesome out there. Shortly after that, we were approached by some other folks that says, "Hey, there may be some, there may be some, some ground on the North Interchange, kind of north of the Fiddler's Canyon area, north Cedar City." And so, we started looking at that site. We actually had some excavators come out. We kind of entered into negotiations as far as price goes. We did utility studies to figure out exactly where our utilities were, where all of the infrastructure was, and we thought that this was really a pretty good site. We met with members of the city council, other local government, our police leaders, all of the police chiefs in the area, police personnel. We did site visits, and everybody says, "You know what? I think this is really a pretty good site. Let's move forward on this site." We got a lot of pushback on that site as well from the neighbors. And, and little did we know, we kind of scratched a twenty-year scab off of that area as far as promises being made for development, promises that had been made as far as retail and other things that had just never come to fruition. Ultimately, we believed that that was a pretty good site. We went to the Cedar City Planning Commission in the process of, of figuring out the need for zone change, the need for conditional use permits, things like that. We, we were on the agenda for the Cedar City Planning Commission, and we were denied. We were denied moving forward with that site at the Cedar City Planning Commission level. At that point, I said, "Okay, we've had a bunch of community input that we, that we really tried to listen to, and so we decided, we've got, we've got to figure out a good place." So, we actually put together a committee, and that committee consisted of people from the neighborhoods that we'd been, that we'd been talking to before. It consisted of construction professionals, contractors in the area. It consisted of police officers and folks that, that would be affected by this whole project. One of our committee members came forward and says, "Hey, look, I think I found a place. I think I found some property. In fact, this property is, this is John Zooms. So, this property sits kind of behind the Horse Alley area, off of Airport Road. It sits behind a line, behind that, that building right there. Can you point at the IFA? There's a line right there, then the IFA building, the fertilizer building. So, the county ultimately purchased about thirty-three acres right there. When we, so, it was fairly complicated at the time. The, the people who had owned that property for generations were in the middle of selling that property to a development company that builds wall panels, styrofoam insulated wall panels for construction. So, ultimately, it wasn't, it wasn't these folks that said, "Hey, we're probably gonna sell." They, they didn't really own it anymore. They were in the process of selling it to somebody else. We went and spoke with the folks that they were selling it to. It was Candor Development. We met, and when I say "we," at this point, myself, Dan Jesson, our auditor, and Carsten Reed, our assessor, were, we were kind of the property committee to look at these different properties. Ultimately, we met with Candor Development in their Realtors' office several times and made the deal on that property and, and purchased that property. The cool thing about this property, it's very level. It's got a, it's got a gravel base. It's gonna take very little dirt work to prepare it. All of the utilities, including sewer, water, fiber, electricity, power, everything else, is basically stubbed in at the edge of that property, which we figured just to run the utilities into that Fiddler's site would have cost us around three million dollars just to bring the sewer pipe up there, to bring those other utilities. So, this is a huge savings there. Candor Development, who owns the front portion of that property, is giddy to, to share property, you know, and have police presence coming in and out of, you know, near their facility twenty-four hours a day. And this property sits in unincorporated Iron County. So, there's the, the need for conditional use permits, zone changes, things like that with Cedar City just doesn't exist anymore. So, ultimately, we came up with that site. So, moving forward, two years ago, we enlisted, we enlisted the services of Babcock Designs, Rob Cottles, our architect that's on the stage today that'll, that can answer some questions. Ultimately, we put out a bid for a general contractor and ultimately awarded latent construction that bid. We started looking at designs, feasibility for the property, and everything else at that time. And we were really moving forward about two years ago. Now, we knew, if you think about the, the economic climate two years ago, our economists, our people that are way smarter than me with numbers, saying, "Hey, look, we may be headed into a recession. We're for sure gonna, gonna see inflation hit, and we're gonna, and subsequent to that inflation, we're gonna see interest rates rise." At this point, we were looking at about a two percent interest rate. We also had, because of, because of that, you know, that fund balance that we had, we actually had it figured out to where with that two percent interest rate, with basically the money coming into the county, we felt that we could, that we could pay our own bond payment at that time, and there wasn't going to be need to go out for a general obligation bond or truth in taxation. And we really pushed forward in hopes that we could do that, because we knew that we were, that we were in a race with time to get that two percent interest rate. I kind of talked, you know, everything slowed down. All the, I mean, because of everything I already talked about, we had to put the brakes on the project and really slow it down. Ultimately, that cost us our two percent interest rate. Inflation hits, and our employees are hurting, just like every other, every other person in the workforce in the country. Our employees are struggling, making ends meet. So, that extra, that extra money that we had coming in that we were going to use for that bond payment, we restructured our, our compensation for our employees. We gave raises where they needed to be, and so basically, we, we took away our ability at that point to make that bond payment. But that was a bond payment based on a two percent interest rate and the cost of about sixty to seventy million dollars on that jail. That two-year, that two years, that two-year break that it took us from there to get to this point has now, with inflation and interest rates and everything else, our price has gone up about twenty million dollars. So, we, we couldn't have made the payment anyway. So, where we are today, ultimately, we've got twenty million dollars in the bank as a down payment. Now, the, the cost of the, the property was purchased from that money. Our, the design, everything that we've done so far has come out of that twenty million dollars. We haven't incurred any debt on this project. We still have a pretty healthy fund balance. We'll continue to, to use that as we move forward. But now, we know that we have to either go the route of a bond or go the route of truth and taxation. We know statistically that jail bonds don't pass the first time. They're very difficult. We opted to look at the truth and taxation route, because we know that if we don't fund this and we don't build this project, if we don't break ground this year, our price goes up between six and ten million dollars per year, and we're just gonna have to come back next year and do it again. So, we opted for the truth and taxation. Truth and taxation would have cost the average homeowner, or the, the average property owner in Iron County, which disgustingly is four hundred and five thousand dollars is the average home in Iron County. It's a bunch of silliness, but that's what it is. That truth and taxation route would have cost the average homeowner, four hundred and five thousand dollar home, about a hundred and eighty-seven dollars a year-ish. The problem with truth and taxation, and what we really struggled with, is once you raise taxes, it never, it never goes away. I mean, that just continues on. We had numerous public hearings. We got beat up. Ultimately, we decided that, that we would go the, that we would go the route of a general obligation bond and put this on the ballot and ask the community to vote on it. This did a couple of different things. This actually gave us got us a better interest rate on that type of financing. Our interest rate now is four point six percent and we're basically locked into that for a minute while we figure out the financing. It also gives it it drops that payment from it drops off at the at the end of the day, once that bond is paid for, that bond drops off, that amount goes away. And we can't use that funding for anything but the payment on that bond.
It's cut off on the bottom, but it's twelve seventy-five a month, twelve dollars and seventy-five cents.
Okay. So we have our we have our budget and then the
Twelve dollars and seventy-five cents a month.
Twelve dollars and seventy-five cents a month is what the average, the ask is for the average property owner. But the bond sits by itself. This this money cannot be intermingled with anything else in the county with any of the other budget. This goes to pay off the, you know, the bond, once it's paid off, drops off. What else before I kick it over to the sheriff?
Luke, before you kick it over to Luke?
Yeah, sorry. I saw the sheriff up here with the light shining off of his dome. Luke's hiding in the shadows. I'm going to have our auditor, Luke Little, come to the stage and just kind of talk about the terms of the bond, exactly how that bond works and such. I don't know if you want to. I don't know, I like pacing, but seriously.
Perfect. Okay, so yeah, I'm sure all of you are here because of the financial impact, you know, on our property taxes. If it wasn't for that, I'm sure, you know, maybe none of you would be here. So that's the real important part that we we get across in this meeting. As Mike stated, when the commissioners first voted on the truth and taxation a couple of months ago, that would have affected an average home in Iron County by a hundred and eighty-five dollars a year. So this top line item, that's the line item that would have increased. And by going this different route, by doing a general obligation bond where it's voted on, it changes the terms a little bit, as he mentioned. And now the the amount per year that it will affect the average home is a hundred and fifty-three dollars a year. So that that's the amount that it would change your property taxes. And let's go to the next slide. Okay, so with with this amount of bond and the amount per year, this is for the two-pod option.
Can you folks see that screen on the side? There's a curtain in the way.
A little bit, on both sides actually.
So when the when the commission met at the last public hearing, they were looking at the difference between a one-pod and a two-pod option. And they had voted and decided to go with the two-pod option. And so these are the statistics on that. There are some pros and cons to each each option that they looked at. And ultimately, coming down to the two-pod option, so it does leave us plenty of room for future growth. We would lock in the construction prices at today's costs for that second pod. And then it would give us the capacity to house contract inmates, state or federal inmates, which we get paid for. And by doing that, that would allow the county to make seven to ten million dollars on a conservative estimate of revenue from housing those inmates. This would give us the ability to put extra money towards the bond and pay that off sooner. And by having the second pod already in place, then we would not have to go back in ten or fifteen years, however long it might be, so that we don't have to increase taxes again to pay for the second pod at a much higher cost. By doing that, we would have to increase our employees. So that would be about five million dollars a year. And we would only do that as we increase our contract inmates. So as we get more inmates, we would hire a few more employees until we have that, you know, maxed out. So in the end, if we're making, you know, seven to ten million dollars, it costs us five million dollars in wages. We're still going to have a profit there. And like I said, that's a conservative estimate on the revenue side. So looking at this, it's kind of cut off on the bottom, but these this shows our neighboring counties. So in the first column, this is Iron County. So we made about two two hundred thousand dollars a year last year on our state inmates. Beaver County is the second one. They make the most in the state. They have the most contract inmates. They made over eight million dollars with their contract inmates. Then we have Garfield County, over two million dollars. Kane County, about four million. And then Washington County, about one point six million. So it is, you know, something that all of our neighboring counties are doing. We had the Kane County Sheriff here last time and he spoke to that and how they were able to pay their bond off a lot sooner.
We'll just do it that way.
Luke, let's go back to the previous slide and just do a recap on that one.
Okay.
Because they couldn't see the bottom of it.
Okay, yeah, so you can see this bottom now. Like I said, it's a hundred and fifty-three dollars per year. And as Mike stated, that bond, once it's paid off, then that would fall off of your property taxes. It would not continue on like the truth and taxation would. That comes out to twelve dollars and seventy-five cents per month. And as I mentioned, you know, all the pros and cons to doing that is a little bit larger tax increase now. But in the future, getting it at today's construction costs saves a lot of money. Okay, go ahead.
Oh, I got to do it this way.
Okay, so here's a direct comparison with Beaver County. Like I said, they made over eight million dollars in their contract inmates in twenty twenty-one. Their total expenses with their jail, officers, everything was six million. So they ended up having a profit, you know, related to that that function of their county of one point eight million. In Iron County, between our state and federal inmates, we made one point six million. Our expenses are over five million. And so our general fund, we're having to put a lot of money into our jail to be able to operate that. And it's not meant to, you know, be a cash cow and make a ton of money, but it would be nice if we could make some more so that we're not having to put a bunch of money from our general fund into our jail. Go ahead to the next one. Okay, and this was just a breakdown when the commission looked at the one-pod versus two-pod. The difference was thirty-four dollars a year. So they did opt to go with the two-pod option and, you know, put that on the ballot and let let everyone make the choice on that. So, thank you.
Thanks. So one of the things that's important about the two-pod facility, I think, is that it gives us growth for the future. If we if we went with just a one-pod facility right now, it would be full in five to ten years and we'd have to be coming back for another bond to build the second pod regardless. By building both pods now, it gives us the opportunity of being able to contract with the U.S. Marshals and with the State Department of Corrections and be able to to bring that money in on contract inmates to be able to help pay off the bond quicker. So the burden on the taxpayers for a shorter period of time. And that that's important to me is is we know that this is a hard thing. You know, it's like Dan Jessen told me here a while back, when's the best time to plant a tree? Twenty years ago. But if you didn't plant the tree twenty years ago, when's the best time to plant a tree today? And the fact of the matter is, is it would have been really nice to have been able to build this project four years ago when it would have cost us twenty million dollars left less. We would have had CIB funding available to us. We would have been able to get a two percent interest rate and the burden would have been much, much lower on the taxpayer. But the requirement hasn't gone away. The requirement is here and it's here to stay until until we do build a new facility. We have to build a new facility. And so, you know, when's the best time to build it? It's going to be now. If one looks at investments and looks at cost-share averaging, what has happened with investments? It's always going up. There may be a few little downtrends here and there, but it's always going up. And the same thing is true with real estate, is it's always going up. There may be little moments where things have a little drop temporarily, but then it takes off and and continues to go up. We can't expect that we're going to time the market to get low interest rates and low construction costs over again. We have to know that whatever's going to happen is going to continue to cost us more and more money. The fact that if interest rates should fall during this, then we can we can refinance that bond at a lower interest rate. But we have to do it. We just don't have a choice. When you look at our current facility, our current facility was built thirty-seven years ago. It's currently the oldest facility in the state of Utah. Because of environmental environmental design, it's a two hundred and fifty-four-bed facility, but we can only house about a hundred and eighty inmates. When we're at a hundred and eighty inmates, we're completely full because of classification separation requirements. So again, those are things that that we have to work with and currently we're full. When this jail was first built, it was designed for female for for four female inmates. Currently, our average is somewhere between twenty-four and forty inmates, female inmates. So, you know, we don't really have any place to put them. When this jail was first built, it had a gymnasium, it had storage space, it had a lot of different things that we were able to use the facility the way it was designed for. All those available spaces have now been turned into housing units. We have no place else left to go. We have completely used every space that's available to us for housing and we don't have any place else left to go. Just on the age of the facility itself, it's beginning to fail. The air handler units on the the roof are completely rusted out. So every time it rains hard, our our facility floods. Because of the way it was designed, there's only, you know, limited drain units and they can't handle the amount of water that comes off of the roof. And so it causes the facility to flood. Because of of the way the sewer system was put in on Main Street in conjunction with our basement, we're pretty much at the same level. So when the when the sewer is full, our basement floods with sewer. Those are problems that we have. Our our HVAC system is so old that in order to keep it running, our maintenance manager has to purchase parts off of eBay. To be able to replace that would cost us millions of dollars. Our septic system is beginning to fail. It was all cast iron pipes underneath and they're beginning to rust out. This facility just doesn't doesn't work for us. One of the first things that we did and one of the first things I did when I was first elected a sheriff was looked at the possibility of remodeling. That's not feasible. It would cost fifteen to twenty-five percent more to remodel the facility than it is just to to build a new facility. And part of the reason is is because you have to keep in mind that this isn't just like an office building or a home that is easy to remodel. This is a facility that has two feet, concrete floors with all the electrical, all the conduits for the electrical, all the sewer, everything in those concrete floors. It has walls that are eight to ten inches thick, all reinforced with rebar. To be able to to do any type of remodel is extremely labor-intensive and extremely cost prohibitive. It makes a lot more sense just to to build a new facility. The second part of it is is because, like I stated, the environmental design of our current facility doesn't lend itself to being able to maximize the use of our bed space. The new facility with the way it's designed allows us not to have any blind spots in the jail portion of the facility. There are no blind spots. And so it makes it much more effective as far as staffing levels go. We don't need nearly as as many staff members per prisoner population. So those things are all extremely important to us in this. You know, at the end of the day, it's like Commissioner Blake said, this isn't, this is a problem that is not going away. We have an obligation that's constitutionally mandated and obligated by state law. We have to provide this. It's something that we are at the point where we don't have a choice. We have to go forward. And, you know, so that's that's really where we're at. So even if this bond gets voted down next year, it'll be back next year. If it gets voted down next year, it'll be back. And eventually, it'll get to the point where we're forced to do it through civil lawsuit or or mandate by the Utah Supreme Court, which is what happened the last time. The first time that this jail, the the current facility was built, it was ordered by the Utah Supreme Court, just for your information. But that's really all I have. Am I missing anything?
I don't think so. Mike Hasmore says.
I'm going to be really quick. Just thinking about other other meetings that we've held, a couple of frequently asked questions that have come up just about every time, I just want to touch on really quick. I've been asked several times lately, okay, we financed this jail. As a taxpayer, what's my return on investment? What do I get out of this? And there's a couple of things. Number one, well, I told you, I I've been a police officer for twenty-eight years. Sometimes when I find people that need to go to jail now, I can't take them to jail because it's full. People that have warrants for their arrest for either bad behavior or, you know, bad behavior that then turned into not paying their fines, not following through on their probation. Many times, if I find somebody like that, I've got to go back and look look at the look at the email from the Sheriff's Department to see if they're accepting warrants currently or if they're accepting Class B misdemeanors, which are assault, DUIs, domestic violence, those type of things. Sometimes the jail can't take those prisoners because because they're full. Or like on a domestic violence, where the losses, I have to book them into jail? That's great, I have to book them into jail and then the jail personnel has to go and and contact the judge and ask for an early release for another prisoner to make room. And so, I mean, we're at a point currently that there's either people being early released from our facility or never going to the facility in the first place where they really need to be. So the one of the, I mean, one of the return on investments is just to save for community. And I like, you know, Mike Gibbs has said over the years, and I've heard him say this dozens of times, he's seen how things work and and the fluctuation of prisoners. And there's people that really need to be there that aren't. And this is true. So when I arrest somebody, there's chatter all the time of, I know that the jail's not taking Class B misdemeanors right now. You can't take me to jail. The criminals understand, they they know quicker than we do what the status of of the acceptance into booking is. And so really, what we have to decide is what is our what is our tolerance for those type of folks and that type of crime? We need a bed for every prisoner that needs to be, every arrestee. Shouldn't say prisoner, that's it's it's arrestee, detainee. We need a bed for every single one of those folks that needs to be there. So public safety is a return on investment. But let me talk about a about a fiscal return on investment really quick. Right now, in the county, our budget is pushing up against the upper limit of what we need in order to continue to compensate our staff in a way that they should be, the way that we can continue to pay for insurance, to pay for the maintenance, not only on the jail facility. I mean, we most of our facilities in the county are aging and require a lot of maintenance. We're pushed up against that limit right now. We're pushed up against that limit right now. With the income from contract inmates, that literally frees up three-point-eight million dollars that we're currently spending out of our general fund to subsidize the, the jail and subsidize corrections. That frees up, you know, that's, that's, I mean, that's money that goes in to pay for the operating expenses of the Sheriff's Department, it pays for the jail, it pays for everything to do with corrections and patrol and everything else. At very little, at very least, that, that frees up almost four million dollars that we're currently using out of the general fund to subsidize the jail, and that's money that could be going into other projects and other things. If we don't build this, and if we don't get that income replaced in the next couple of years, we will have to come back in truth and taxation just for operating costs. Now, it's not going to be, you know, an eighty-million-dollar ask, but we're gonna have to come back and ask for four or five million dollars a year just for operating costs. With the income from those contract inmates, it really should save us as having to come back with any kind of a tax increase for the foreseeable future. It's, it's not something that we can guarantee, and it's not anything that we can tie down future commission, commissions with that, but we truly believe that we're not gonna have to come back and ask for more tax money, more bond money for the foreseeable future with this project and with this plan. So, I mean, it's a tangible return on investment. Number two, and the sheriff talked about it, interest rates fall, the very first thing we're gonna do is refinance, get that bond payment lower. Second, the question about our current jail properties come up over and over and over again. As soon as we can sell that property, we're going to do it. As soon as we have a new facility and we can move our detainees, we're gonna sell that property. And we're not, we're not exactly sure what that's gonna look like. We're gonna do everything we can to get the very most money out of that prop, out of that piece of property, and all of that, all of that money is gonna go into the, into the payment of that bond. We don't know if that means level the whole thing and just sell a blank commercial property, if it's knocking down the jail portion and keeping the business office portion. When it comes to that, we'll confer with developers, real estate, you know, all the folks that we know, to figure out what's gonna make that property the very most valuable so that all of that money can go back into the payment of that bond. So that's what's gonna happen with the, with the current jail property. We've been asked in just about, about every meeting and, about a consumption tax, basically a, a sales tax, so that it spreads the burden out to people driving through, things like We, as the county commission, don't have the authority to initiate that sort of a tax. But the state legislature does. So after our last meeting in this room, we got with Representative Ship, and Representative Ship has actually opened a bill file to specifically allow a, a, a consumption tax increase that would go directly to, or directly for a correctional facility, a jail facility. We, so basically what has to happen is that has to, that, that'll be in this session of the legislature, that's gonna have to go through that whole legislative process. If it's approved by our legislator, legislature, it comes back to the county, and the county, that, that's not something that we can, again, just enact, that's something that has to go on the ballot. So, uh, next year, potentially, there could be an item on the ballot asking for anywhere from, well, up to one percent of a, of a, of a sales tax, and then the funds from that would go directly to help pay for the jail. In looking at that, we would be able to generate three to three-and-a-half million dollars a year on that sales tax, which would pay about half of that bond payment. So it's not necessarily, it, it's not an either-or, it's something that can, you know, certainly augment that bond payment and help us pay that off early. So that's something that we've initiated with the state legislature because of, you know, these meetings.
Commissioner, just a clarification?
Yes.
So, on that use tax, it would not apply to raw ingredients for food, right?
Yes. No, it would, yeah, it, that, that would not apply to groceries, those type of things. This is, so, so this, this is a statistic that, I mean, this, this happened this week. So, one of my other part-time jobs, I work, I, I'm an investigator with the, with the medical examiner's office for the state. So it's my job to investigate suicides, suspicious deaths, things like that. Our current jail has four cells that are set aside for medical-type cells, including suicide watch. When somebody indicates that they may hurt themselves, they go on suicide watch, there's this whole protocol that, that gets initiated because of that. We have four spaces in the jail that, that are set up to, to be able to watch somebody who's suicidal. Currently, we have eight inmates on suicide watch. We had one attempted suicide last week. Thankfully, our correctional officers got there in time and were able to resuscitate that individual and save his life. But that's, I, I mean, as of tonight, you know, we've got space for four suicidal folks, and we've got eight on suicide watch currently. Sheriff talked about, you know, the jail was built for four female inmates. We currently, on average, house forty female inmates. That's forty feel, forty female inmates that share one shower. Just, those are some, those are some of the frequently asked questions that after I sat down, I, I jotted down really quick. Anything else? I'll turn the time back over to Commissioner Cousins.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucas and Ken, Sheriff Carpenter. Appreciate your, I just had a couple of things I jotted down, I don't want to say much, I just, you know, this, this, the building of a jail is not something that we've enjoyed doing. We've, it's not a soccer field, it's not a park, it's not something that we're gonna, it's, it's a need that we have, and it's not just a, it's not just an Iron County problem, it's not a county commission problem. Just for an example, in two thousand twenty-two, unincorporated county, it was two-hundred-and-seve, two-hundred-and-eighty-seven inmates that were arraigned in the, in the county jail, and Cedar City had four-hundred-and-fifty-six. So Cedar City proper had far more arrests than, than we did as a county. And so, bookings, bookings, thank you, thank you. And so, and we don't charge booking fees. I mean, it's, it's against state law, we can't, we can't ask our municipalities to help bear that burden. And when Commissioner Blake talked about things not getting cheaper, a lot of people, it's been interesting, I've been in the construction industry for forty years, and I'm a remodel guy, I'm, I'm the type of guy that likes to remodel buildings, and, and I've, I've done a lot, a lot of work in, in, on commercial schools in Sevier County, where they've taken old elementary schools, brought them up to code, added on to them and, and made a beautiful school, and saved the taxpayers millions of dollars, I'm all for that. I've fought for different things over the years of not tearing down buildings, but remodel them. But as you look at, at the, the complexity of a jail, and, and, and Rob Cottle, our architect, has, has done a presentation on this, so if any of you have questions, he could address those too. But as you look at scenarios of even just adding a shower or a toilet, and, and some of the things that Mike Gibbs, our jail maintenance individual, has, has brought to, to light, it's just, it's just not feasible to do, it would be counterproductive to try to do that at this time. I, I've also, just one more thought, I've had friends, I can't remember how many years ago, I lose track of time, maybe five years ago, the, the home prices were at an all-time high, they sold their homes, saying, when, when prices go down, I'm gonna, you know, they, they started renting, they moved their family out of their homes, sold it, thought they were, made a whole bunch of money, and they were gonna, you know, when prices came back down, they were gonna build a home, and, and since then, they've doubled in price. And we've seen what inflation's done to us. And that's the difficult part for us as commissioners right now, is we didn't cause inflation, but we're dealing with it, and it's painful, it really is, and this is, this is part of the, part of the thing that's been difficult. Those are just some thoughts I jotted down, I don't know, Commissioner Wood, if you have any, any thoughts.
Probably the only thing that I would add to that is, when I first ran, I went through the jail, and I wish every one of you could go through it and really see it for yourself because, like I said in, in the other, one of the other meetings too, was, you know, my fear for, for the, for the inmates, but, but also for our staff. You know, like Sheriff Carpenter said, there, there are areas that you can't see around the corner. And, and that really haunted me. You know, as commissioners, our employees are so important to us, and, and they're such a value to the whole county. And I would just, you know, on our watch, I would just would be sick if something happened to one of them. I, I, I think everybody knows how we all feel, that we, we know how important this is, and this is not a fun process that we've had to go through. I would have never thought that, that this is what commission would be, you know, I mean, I'm over roads and I get yelled at a lot, but, but, you know, over this jail, it's been, it's been hard. But, but it's, it's, it's a need that we, that we have to do. We're mandated to do this, and, and so, it's just something that we have to do, but I won't take up any more time, I, I'd like to hear from you guys.
Well, we'll go ahead and, and open this up to a, to a public meeting, to hear arguments for and against the, the bond for this, the issuance of the, of a potential bond. And so, if you can, when you come up, speak into this mic, be a rock star, talk close so we can hear you, there's someone back there taking minutes of this meeting, and so if you could state your name and jot your name down on the clipboard, as I mentioned earlier, that'll help, help our clerks, staff take good, accurate minutes on who spoke and said what. So, so if you'd like to speak, come forward.
While those folks are coming up, I had one call come in, a gentleman named Tyson Oliver called, and he asked about traffic at Airport Road and Highway fifty-six, and whether we had considered impacts to traffic there. I don't know if we have a response to that, or... Sorry, as you were walking up.
Yeah, I, I don't think that the, that there would be a huge influx of traffic as far as the jail's concerned. You know, the deputies, for the most part, are out on the road, patrolling. The ones that are, that are, that may more directly impacted are, are the deputies that are coming or, or leaving work, but those are typically off-peak hours. You know, we do have a delivery vehicle that comes to deliver food, but, you know, it's, it's a single vehicle, it's nothing that's going to impact that traffic. One of the things that we're also looking at is for the deputies to be able to have ingress and egress from across railroad tracks over by metal craft, which would take us out lower on, on Highway fifty-six. And we're not all going to the same place anyway, we're going to different parts of the county, so not all that traffic would have to go across fifty-six at any given time, or Airport Road for that matter.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Thank you for all the information you've shared tonight. It really shows the due diligence of...
Your name?
I'm Deborah Hartman.
Deborah Hartman?
Deborah Hartman. I live up in Cedar Highlands.
Yeah, thank you.
But I want to thank the commission for all the work that you've done on this, all the information you provided, it was very, very helpful. One of the things that I had a concern about is a memo that came out from the Salt Lake City Director, ICE Director, and it came out on five-thirty-one, and he declared Utah a sanctuary state, and he, he did this as a result of trying to work with three other counties, not Iron County, in handling of immigrants, illegal immigrants. Just October sixth, Governor Cox did come out with a statement. He did say that Utah is not a sanctuary state. But even with that being said, we've had four months of illegal immigrants crossing the border, flooding the border states, and we are all border states now. So what do you envision the impact of that on our jail and the facilities and our ability to address that?
Thank you very much, that is a great question. First off, let me say, Mr. Bernanke has no authority at all to declare Utah a sanctuary state or anything else. He's a federal appointee. The only person that could declare Utah a sanctuary state is the governor, not Mr. Bernanke. The second part is, and I'll just say it, Mr. Bernanke's a liar. He, he cites a large number of, of what he claims are fugitives that had to be released because sheriffs wanted to accept them into the, into their jail. Pardon my French, that's bullshit. That is total manure. Mr. Bernanke is grandstanding for his own political purposes, and he's lying. Here's the deal, anytime any law enforcement agency, whether it's federal, state, or local, makes a criminal arrest in a particular county, that's what the jail is there for. They can bring those inmates into that jail on those criminal charges for which they have probable cause. What Mr. Bernanke is talking about, but he doesn't state it, are contract inmates. The sheriff's offices work very closely with the federal marshals and with the Utah Department of Corrections on housing those inmates as contract inmates, but we don't work with ICE. And the reason we don't work with ICE is because ICE's standards are absolutely ridiculous and over the top. They give their inmates far more privilege than what the US Marshals, the Utah Department of Corrections, or the county jails provide for their inmates. They have over six, over seven-hundred-page document that details what we, as sheriffs, have to provide their inmates in those jail facilities. And the sheriffs have just got fed up with and said, we're not gonna deal with you on a long-term basis. We don't have to, we're not going to do it. So ICE went to Congressman Stewart's office not quite a year ago...
Sheriff, could you clarify what ICE is?
The Immigration Customs Enforcement. So they went to Congressman Stewart's office about a year ago and wanted Congressman Stewart to force the sheriffs to take their long-term detainees. So Celeste Malloy came out to the Western State Sheriff's Conference in Reno, Nevada, and met with us, that were Utah sheriffs that were there, and we had a, a great conversation with her. She went back as Congressman Stewart's chief legal counsel, and she pushed back against ICE. And she basically told them that if you come into, into compliance with both other federal law enforcement agency housing requirements and state housing requirements, the sheriffs will be happy to work with you. But they're not going to provide all these additional benefits, and they're not gonna be dictated by ICE as to how they run their jail. And so, as a result, this is what Mr. Bernanke's doing. He's sitting there trying to cause the people of Utah to be afraid that this is now a sanctuary state and that we're being overrun by illegal immigrants. So this is gonna take a minute, but please let me read the Utah Sheriff's Association's press release that we released last Friday. "The Utah Sheriff's Association has been made aware of a memo that was written by the US Immigration and Customs Enforcements, ICE, Salt Lake City Field Officer Director, Michael Bernanke, titled 'Sanctuary State Designation for the State of Utah.' In this memo, Bernanke takes it upon himself to declare Utah a sanctuary state and makes absurd claims that Utah sheriffs are responsible for destabilizing ICE's law enforcement capabilities in Utah and surrounding states. Utah sheriffs see this memo as nothing more than another attempt by ICE to abdicate the response..." responsibility to enforce immigration law and an attempt to shift blame for their failed policies. We have also seen a press release written by Riverton Mayor Trent Staggs that tries to shift the blame on state leaders. We see this press release as nothing more than an uninformed attempt to score cheap political points. In response, the Utah Sheriff's Association issued the following statement. 'It is our understanding that this ICE memo has been distributed to Utah legislators, Utah's federal delegation, and the Utah's, Utah governor's office. It has also been sent to at least one current political candidate, Riverton Mayor Trent Staggs, who issued, issued his own press release. While the one group who can supply honest dialogue to these claims, Utah sheriffs, has not been approached by Bernanke or Staggs, we applaud Utah lawmakers and the governor's office for their leadership and integrity in reaching out to us to understand the truth. The Utah Sheriff's Association declares this memo to be misleading, reckless, reckless, and damaging to any further interactions with ICE. Additionally, we express our extreme disappointment in Riverton Mayor Trent Staggs for his naive and uninformed press release in support of ICE's liberal agenda that blames state leaders for ICE's failures. Nothing could be further from the truth. Utah sheriffs, sheriffs from across the country and the citizens of this nation have paid the price for the failure of the Biden administration to secure our border. We have watched them dismantle our border security. We have watched them thwart efforts of border sheriffs." And that's, I mean, that's basically the size of it. Well, let me, there is one more paragraph here. I'm sorry. "Border sheriffs and border states trying to stop the massive flow of undocumented criminals and immigrants into our country. We have watched as, as organized crime has gained a stronger hold on our border than our own government. To claim the current border crisis and its effect upon Utah as the fault of Utah sheriffs is a ridiculous attempt to shift blame. We call on ICE and the Biden administration to do their job and secure our borders. And we call on candidates running for office to understand the facts before attempting to score cheap political points." And that's, I mean, that's where we're at, is the problem that we're having... The problem that we're having with immigration isn't a problem because we're not housing long-term ICE inmates. The problem we're having is because the Biden administration has a failed policy and has done nothing to secure our borders. Just last Saturday night, one of my canines hit on a vehicle and we, we recovered 55 pounds of methamphetamine, four pounds of fentanyl, uh, two pounds of heroin, and one ounce of cocaine for the driver's personal use. Okay? And that's, that's the kind of stuff that we're seeing here. Right here on I-15 and I-70, Highway Patrol and the sheriffs are getting pipelines almost every single week. We've got a huge problem across, across the nation now with child sex trafficking and human trafficking. We've got a huge problem with an influx of illegal aliens, not just from southern countries, but from around the world that are coming across our border. When one sits there and looks at the, at the, the things that are going on in Israel right now with Hamas coming across Israel's borders, one has to wonder, "Are we next?" How many of these terrorists have come into our own country across the southern border because Biden has failed to do his damn job? Utah sheriffs across the board are going to do everything we can to protect our citizens. If we have illegal aliens that commit criminal offenses, they're going to be arrested and they're going to be held to stand trial just like anybody else. If ICE makes arrests of criminal, of people committing crime and bringing them to our jails, they'll be held just like anybody else. But we're not going to put up with all their nonsense and all their political grandstanding to house somebody on a long-term basis. We're not going to do it. That's not our responsibility. That's their responsibility to figure out their own federal prisons to house those people. That's not our job. If we choose to work with them, then we will. But we're not going to do it when they sit there and put absolutely ludicrous responsibilities on us. We're just not going to do it. So, thanks.
My name's Darcy Fersh.
What was your name again?
Darcy Fersh.
Darcy Hirsch?
Sure, Fersh.
Hirsch?
F is in Frank.
Can you just write your name down, please?
I did.
Did you? Thank you.
I wrote it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In the March 2022 county meeting, it was, it was reported by the local news that the county planner stated that they do not plan to raise taxes or issue a general obligation bond. He said the county plans on securing the rest of the funding by applying for the grants and going out into the open bond market. A year and a half later, you tried pushing an increase in taxes that failed, and now on our ballot is a general obligation bond. So I looked, I couldn't find documentation or a meeting where it was explained why there was a 180-degree shift on this. So, I, um, and I guess it's important for me to mention, I'm a strong supporter of jail. I'm well aware that in the state of Utah, out of 29 counties, 27 of them have jails. I am a strong supporter of where you're putting it. I like the design. I think it's a cool design. But I have some serious concerns with the way you're going about the funding. I went to the Utah State Corrections website. I pulled the jail program. I read it. What you didn't have in your slides is the additional jail programs for the inmates that bring in additional money. I'll quote a few lines from this particular, um, program. "The primary benefit of the jail program for counties is the infusion of funding. The cost of jail expansion often is beyond the revenue stream of small counties. Finding ongoing funding sources to help pay off construction bonds is a necessity. In addition to contracting out beds, this jail program has a list of inmate programs that they add to every year, I might add, that counties can take advantage of to increase additional money streams, which, when I was looking at the report, and granted, this was from 2022, we don't take advantage of those." Um, here's a kicker. They also say, "Inmates have assisted in the construction of county jail facilities, saving substantial dollars on jail expansion projects." The report also said that, yeah, the Utah State Legislature approved Iron County to have 25 additional contract beds. So to my calculation, that means that now you should have 35 beds that you can contract out, which is more than double. Beaver County, I went through, I went through all the counties, but I spent some time on Beaver, and wow, impressive. It's a large facility, granted, and they contract out a lot of their beds. However, what makes Beaver successful is they aggressively, aggressively go after the inmate programs. And what your slide didn't have was those additional funds. You should have put up there the additional funds Beaver brings in, which is, I think, over $800,000, $800,000 in 2022. That's in addition to the $8 million they bring in. They work it aggressively. I researched grants. It was quick. I specifically went and looking for municipal grants. There's a lot of them out there. I did a targeted search on grants for municipalities that, um, are specific to, uh, aging buildings with crumbling infrastructure. I also did research on facilities management of jails. I get that when a jail is old, the biggest issue for a jail is aging. So I've done some research on this because I'm, because I don't like this approach. It's like you're showing us that there's only one way to get money, and there's a lot of different things we could be doing to bring in revenue and to help the taxpayers. I get that looking for funding, looking for these revenue streams is time-consuming and you have some restraints. I get that. But I'm more than happy to volunteer. I think there's plenty of people in this county that would be willing to volunteer, um, in order to help look for funds, um, in addition to what you've already got up here. If we're going to do a general obligation bond, I'm curious as to what is the proposed, is there a cap on the tax during the life of this bond? Because nobody's addressed that. So I'm curious about that. But, um, those are my concerns. I appreciate the time.
Thank you. And I, I hope that the audience realizes that this, this theater is designed for sound to go that way, and it's very hard for us to hear up here. So I apologize for not being able to hear you very well. I mean, we heard your comments, but, and you spoke well into the mic, but, but trying to repeat your name, I just, it's, the sound in here is not good for us, sorry. Um, and we've got your name. Thank you very much. Um, I wanted to talk, Carter, give me just a minute. I wanted to talk about, and then Commissioner Blake wanted to address a couple of things, but I wanted to talk about CIB funding. CIB funding is a, is a revenue source, um, that its Community Impact Board, and the funds that that board has typically historically, uh, given to projects around the state is derived from mineral, um, mineral extraction. And, and the sheriff, and I'm not to get political here, but the sheriff talked about the failed Biden administration. The minute the Biden administration took over, they shut down oil and gas development in the U.N. Basin. They shut down everything they can to cripple our economy. And we, we receive money through CIB through those funds, and they're, they're almost broke. We used to could go to a, a facility, John, what were we looking at? Maybe $20 million from CIB at a, like a 1% interest rate?
Yeah, very favorable.
Very favorable. Maybe even 30 million. Those, they're gone. They're broke. They don't have that money. Many of the buildings that you see and use every day with your families in this state have been built with CIB funds. They're broke. We don't have any more money. We went to that route. That's one, that's one of the options that we had at our disposal. It's not available. And that's just, I wanted to clear that up. Um, and then Commissioner Blake, I know I had some comment.
Oh, I've got a, I've got a, hello? I just gotta get closer. I've got a comment. I assume the sheriff does as well. Yeah, that, okay, this one's a little hotter. Um, specifically with that two-pod construction, uh, that's going to give us additional space for programming. Uh, right now, our, we have very little to know programming at our current facility because we've flat run out of room. Uh, classrooms that have been used for inmate programming in the past are now dormitories. Um, we don't take on additional contract inmates currently because we don't have bed space for them. Uh, we have about 10 state inmates. Those inmates are really critical to our infrastructure because they run the culinary department as well as the laundry department. So we pay those guys about 40 cents a day to do that instead of having to contract that out for professional services. So those 10 state inmates that we house, uh, that's all that we have room for currently, and, uh, that they save us a ton of money. Uh, in the new facility, we have lots of room for programming space. In fact, programming has been one of the issues that we have, it's been critical to us from day one. Uh, the sheriff, I'm sure, is going to talk about a, a pretty neat program that they've just found out about. Uh, but even this last week, uh, I met with a virtual reality company here at the One Utah Summit in Cedar City that specializes in, uh, in providing virtual reality education for correctional facilities and have contracts across the country. They offer anything from GED training to virtual welding to, uh, culinary to, they, they have over 2,500 different programs.
Even college degrees.
Even college degrees. Uh, we can, programming is, is foremost on our mind. We know that that's a very valuable funding stream. Uh, there's a lot of information that we haven't necessarily put into this presentation just for the interest of time, uh, because it's, I mean, we've gotten into the weeds i- in this planning. I mean, literally hundreds and hundreds of hours that we, we could be here for days to talk about every single nuance. Uh, but that's, that's super important for us. Uh, I'm sure the sheriff's gonna, sheriff's gonna build on that a little bit.
So, so first, first, let me just tell you that the number that you have, uh, for state inmates is actually wrong. Uh, originally, we were authorized 10 state inmates. I went back to, uh, legislation and asked that number to be increased from 10 to 100, which legislation approved. So right now, we can, we could house up to 100 state, uh, uh, inmates. But as Commissioner Blake said, we don't do that because we just don't have the room. The reason I went back and asked for those 100 inmates is to start preparing the way for, to increase our number of state inmates in a new facility. I just met with Director Redd from the Utah Department of Corrections here with the other Utah sheriffs, and he gave us the new, uh, contract fee for the next fix, for the next year. For just straight housing of inmates, it goes up from about $63 a day to $78.23. If you're offering some programming, it's $83.82 a day. And if, if you're, uh, got a full programming, uh, program, it goes up to $93.88 a day, which is almost $10 a day more than what we've been stating that we'd be able to get through, uh, federal, federal inmates. Uh, we do some programming, but our programming has been limited because, as I've said, every available space has pretty much been utilized for housing, just to be able to, to house inmates. Here, a couple months ago, I was reading an article, and I, I came across a, a program called IGNITE that was started in Genesee County, Michigan by Sheriff Chris Swanson. Uh, it's an acronym which stands for Inmate Growth Naturally and Intentionally Through Education. So my jail commander and my jail sergeant and I, uh, flew back to Genesee here, what, about three or four weeks ago? And, and we went and looked at their program firsthand, and it's a pretty amazing program. Uh, they, they have a food management program through Aramark that they, uh, have a certification process that when an inmate comes out as a graduate of that program, they're qualified to be able to run a food, food management program in a hotel or in a restaurant. They have, uh, a entry-level commercial drivers program where they're not allowed to get their commercial driver's license, but they are allowed to be able to do all of the paperwork portion of a commercial driver's license to give them a leg up when they get out and seek their commercial driver's license. They have a welding program and a electrician's program that are all done, uh, via virtual reality. And those are things that we've already started looking at. We've been talking with Southwest Trade Tech. I've been talking with, uh, other, uh, groups and whatnot. And, and if we are able to build this new facility, we will have the facilities available to us to be able to do that kind of programming, to be able to maximize the dollar amount, uh, that, that you're talking about, ma'am. So it's something that we're looking at very, very, uh, seriously in how we can get the, the maximum dollar out of our contract inmates. So thank you for that question.
So, since I've been in office, we've gone and talked to the legislature every year. And we've asked them for jail money, if there's any grant money available. They said, "We don't pay for jails. The counties have to pay for jails." Of course, the CIB money was always available, and that's probably what most of them were built with. I, we, we have been racking our brain, trying to find if somebody knows of a grant to give us. Great. It, it's amazing to me when you, um, look at the money that they throw at trails and outdoor rec. We have gotten, and our county has benefited from it. But that's kind of a want, not a need. This jail is really a need. And so it's kind of a different thing, you know? They, they throw money at trails and that type of thing a lot, not so much jails. And we have been looking, and, I mean, if anybody has any ideas of any grants, let us know. know, because we've tried.
Let me just go over one other thing. You you the very first part of your question was about, I remember, was it March of twenty twenty-one or twenty-twenty-two, where we talked about that we probably wouldn't need to to come to the taxpayer to bond. And the reason was, was because at that point in time, as Commissioner Cousins has pointed out, that we thought that C I B funding was going to be available to us, and because the county had extra money that was available. But then, if you remember history, you remember the Black Lives Matter riots, and you remember uh, the defund the police movements that went around the nation? And because Salt Lake City fell into that, when everything was said and done, uh, if you recall, Black Lives Matter riots destroyed one of the Salt Lake City Police Stations. And because of the stance that that the Salt Lake City Government had taken on that, uh, Salt Lake P D as a whole, as their officers, said that they weren't going to work for Salt Lake P D anymore. And if they could retire, they retired, and if they could find another job elsewhere, they went and found another job elsewhere. Well, as with many of these blue cities across the nation that defunded the police, all of a sudden, they realized about a year later that they had to have police, but nobody wanted to work for them. And that was the case of Salt Lake City. So as a result, Salt Lake decided that the only way that they were going to be able to to get someone to come to work for them was to raise their wages by thirty percent. So that's what they did. When they raised their wages by thirty percent, West Valley City, South Jordan, West Jordan, uh, Park City, all of them said, well, we're not going to get left behind in this. And so they raised their wages by thirty percent or more and started having sign-on bonuses to draw officers to their agencies. Well, the ones that that hurts are the rural agencies that can't compete with the Wasatch Front. I lost twenty-two deputies in a ten-month period of time. Twenty-two. Including my jail, I lost a quarter of my total force in a ten-month period of time.
Ken, how much did we pay as a county to train and put them through post?
Oh, geez. I don't even know, hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars probably on average. Okay? So as a result, I went back to the commission, I said, I I need something to help stop the bleeding, or or we won't have a sheriff's office before long. And they came back and graciously gave us a ten percent raise, which wasn't anything near what Salt Lake and all these other agencies are doing, but because of the quality of life, it was enough to keep our deputies here and was enough to be able to to hire some more deputies. So we're back to full strength. But we compete, we're not competing with just Cedar City or Enix or whatnot, we're competing with what Mesquite does, we're competing with what Salt Lake does. And and that's just.
Highway Patrol.
That's just what it is, and that's the same thing with the Highway Patrol, and that's one of the problems that we run in with the state, is the state here, two years ago, raised their starting wage to just under thirty dollars an hour. My starting wage for my deputies is about twenty-four dollars an hour, a six-dollar-an-hour difference. And then this past year, they gave a nineteen percent interest, a nineteen percent cost of living increase. That's what we're competing with. That's what makes it so difficult. The one thing that we, well, the two things that we have going for us is our quality of life here in Iron County, and the loyalty of of our of our employees that want to raise their families in a good community. That's what's saving us, you know, because they're working for a lot less than what they can make in just about any other part of the state. So, you know, we're we're pretty fortunate with the people that we have.
I was hoping that Rob could respond to uh, one of the one of the comments she made about using inmates to help build a jail.
So um. In my in my own.
Rob, Rob Cottle is our lead architect?
Uh, so in our experience, we've done four correctional facilities in the state of Utah over the past twelve years, and uh, we've never actually encountered um, any inmate labor on construction sites. Um, and I don't know if that's a a Utah thing, but I'm not familiar with with inmate labor uh, building the jail. Inmate labor, once the jail is complete, is quite common, uh, like was said, uh, in the laundry and the kitchen, those are the two primary areas where inmate labor is is used significantly, and that's um, that's to, it helps the operational costs of the jail, but it's it's also a privilege and a and a perk for the inmates that behave themselves to be able to get out of the day rooms and to do something productive with their day rather than sit around. Um, and so um. It's entirely possible that uh, you could you could theoretically have inmate labor, however, most general contractors, for their liability uh, reasons, require all their folks to pass background checks, they have to um, uh, there there's certain standards that they that they have to hold, and that's and that's up to the general contractor ultimately, who they who they hire, because they ultimately have the liability for it. Um, and just briefly, I know it was touched upon by Commissioner Blake, but uh, the programming aspect is absolutely a key part of the jail design. Uh, the the spoke, the hub and spoke uh, design concept for the for the pods is set up so that not only there's maximum flexibility to give the sheriff and the jail commander um, the ability to uh, classify and uh, segregate their inmates as they feel the need to, but it also has, uh, each pod has uh, five dedicated, uh, excuse me, uh, seven dedicated um, programming spaces uh, for the inmate population per pod. So there's actually fourteen programming spaces that it, they're really generic classroom-type spaces, because again, the intent is to give the the sheriff and the jail commander the flexibility to decide what sort of contract inmates they want to bring on, uh, but it gives them the space uh, and the room to do the things that they need to do to meet those program requirements, because the uh, the comment was correct in that uh, the contract inmates that come from the state, uh, certain uh, inmate profiles, uh, you have to provide certain services in order to to be able to qualify to take them as contract contract inmates. So that that's absolutely built into the jail design that we currently have, so uh, there's no reason in the foreseeable future that um, that that can't be accommodated. Uh, it certainly, in a full build-out scenario, like I said, leaves fourteen spaces uh, for programming. Um, and more importantly, because of its modular sort of design, it also allows the sheriff and the jail commander, over time, to reconfigure and reallocate segregation spaces and and inmate classifications, uh, just as things change, uh, that perhaps now, uh, twenty years from now, we may not uh, know what that is, but that's the kind of the basic premise of the design, to allow for that.
I'd like to speak um. I'd like to speak to some of the extraordinary efforts. Um, this is a, we don't normally toot our own horn on this, but uh. Would you, do you have something to say? Fair, but she asked like eight questions. Right. It's fair, we we, there's a risk of us talking you to death, yeah. Okay. I will stop.
Carter Wilkie, um, I just have a couple of questions. Do what is our revenue from the feds? Do we currently have any federal inmates? Do we know what they pay per day?
We have about thirty inmates, and they're paying seventy-four dollars a day right now.
Okay, so they're about seventy.
So.
Um, I forgot her name, I apologize, the name we couldn't figure out first, was that the last name? She um, she mentioned this uh, program booklet that I was also, I found online, and you know, there's a lot of information on the Department of Corrections website, and it had, they have a whole website dedicated to the jail programs, um, the the placement program with the Utah Department of Corrections. And in this booklet, now, this booklet was published in twenty-twenty-one, but it was updated in twenty-twenty-three, and so I just, a couple of questions that I have um, in regards to the revenue and the funding from the feds and from the state, that's just really my only concern, is making sure that we can pay for it. Um, currently, so the budget that the state can spend on federal inmates, the number of inmates that the Department of Corrections can send to county jails, that budget is set by the state legislature every single year. So, and according to their information on their website, um, in this year, well, it says it was updated March of twenty-three, so I'm not sure if that includes this legislative legislative session, or if that was one legislative session passed.
Yeah, this, the information I just gave was what Director Redd just barely gave us at the Utah Sheriff's Conference.
As far as the seventy-four. So, and I don't have the number for what was passed in this year's budget, but according to their website, they currently, that budget equals fifteen-hundred-and-ninety-seven inmates per year that can go at any given time to county jails. So in twenty-twenty-one fiscal year budget, it was fourteen-hundred-and-fifty, it increased to fifteen-ninety-seven, I don't know what that number is after this last budget. But if you go through their jail booklet and you actually count, I just did the math, and if I include the hundred beds that you're, we're now allowed to take, according to their booklet, it says how many, every jail, it says how many beds are available to house state inmates. And if you add all those numbers up, it equals nineteen-hundred-and-nineteen beds. It's a little over nineteen-hundred beds, but the state only budgets for us to send about sixteen-hundred inmates. So there's already, I mean, according to their math, there's more beds available than they even will pay to send people to. So I guess my question is kind of going along with hers is, what's the efforts to legislate the state legislature, to lobby the state legislature, they either need to increase that budget, or we're going to be having to to fill all these beds, we're going to have to take inmates from other counties? Because that's my question.
Yeah, and that's a good question.
And what's the plan there?
That's a good question, Carter. Again, Director Redd just barely told us that in addition to the current number of of state inmates that are out there, that they're predicting that they need bed space for an additional four-hundred-and-fifty state inmates this next year. So those are things that the the legislature listens to Director Redd and and makes those adjustments as they have to make them. Is the fact of the matter is, is right now, with the way things are, the state doesn't have the ability to house them. And and we pretty much knew when they built the new prison that they weren't going to have that that bed space available. They they build a smaller prison than the than the original one was. And, you know, with the failed policies of J R I, the numbers aren't going down like they predicted, they're going up.
Yeah, so that's my only concern is, if we don't have the funding for it, is it realistic to think we're going to be able to fill it? Because the money's just not there as of now. Now, that could, of course, change in any legislative session.
And it it changes every legislative session. Um, you know, the the sheriffs and and the Utah Department of Correction all work very closely with our state legislators to to meet the needs, or whatever those needs are. But in addition to that, and part of the reason that I look at the federal inmates is the federal inmates we typically have for sixty to ninety days, because what they are is they're inmates that have been convicted of their crime, but they haven't been sentenced yet. So there were basically a temporary stopover until they get sentenced, and then they're sent to the federal penitentiary where they're going to spend their long-term time at. But.
And I will be the first to say, I don't have the data on the federal inmates. So if there's a supply of federal inmates that'll keep it full, then that definitely helps answer the question, so.
So one of the things the federal government is looking at doing right now is getting rid of all their private contractors. That that's, to give you an example, over in Prump, where they've got a federal contract and a private uh, company, if that closes down, that's twenty-five-hundred federal inmates that have, they have to find beds for in two years. So, you know, there just isn't a shortage, we've never seen a shortage. Can we guarantee it? No, we can't guarantee it, because we don't, they don't, nobody signs contracts. What they contract for is is the bed price. And that's one of the things that that, even though right now we're getting like seventy-four dollars a day from from the feds, you know, the the marshal's office has told us we need to come back and renegotiate our price because we're not getting paid enough. You know, with with the new prices that the state is looking at, we we figured we could probably negotiate for up to eighty-five dollars. Now I'm thinking, well, we could probably negotiate closer to ninety-five dollars if the state's going to pay us ninety-three for for programming for state inmates.
Do we know, and one last question, do we know, like, in our current jail, what our cost per inmate per day roughly is? I mean, if you take our operating expense divided by the number of current inmates?
That's a, that's really a.
I know, it's a tough question.
That's really a hard question.
Meals are.
So, so, yeah, just give you an example of our meals. Our our meals are basically a dollar five, is that what it is now? A dollar twenty, so a dollar twenty, a dollar twenty per meal.
Okay.
Is what we're paying for meals right now. Um, you know, and and part of the reason that it's hard to to give you a price per inmate is because it all depends on on what your bed count is, because it it takes us pretty much the same staffing levels to staff the jail, whether it's empty or whether it's full.
And I get that, yeah.
And so if it's full, then the cost goes down. If the numbers are low.
Yeah, your price per inmate goes down, the more full the jail is.
So, so that's, that's why it's so hard to to give you a firm number of what that cost is, is because it's, it fluctuates.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
David Williams. First of all, I'd like to say that uh, I listen to you guys talk, and it's obvious we, our philosophies are very far apart, very far apart. I hear you, Marilyn, talk about your employees. They're not your employees, it's not your business, this is not a private business. You're our employees. You guys are supposed to work for us. But you guys like listening to yourselves talk, I get it. I like listening to myself talk, too, but I felt a lot of disrespect just now, and and some of the folks spoke up about it, and that's good. But look, you guys work for us, okay? I know you want this jail really bad, maybe it's not a good time. You guys need to think about the harm it's going to do. You're talking about human lives, it sounds like trafficking, human trafficking, slavery. It's very immoral, the way you couch these terms, the way you talk about it, you talk about human lives, like profit and loss, government shouldn't be about profit. It should be about protecting all of our rights, our freedoms, and it shouldn't be about profit. It should never be about profit. I realize there's a money aspect to government, I'm not an idiot, but it's still crazy to me, and you, the way you guys are looking at me right now, it's like, I'm a bug. I know what you think, but you know what, your philosophy is wrong. You guys need to go back to grade school and and get your heart adjusted. And I'm not talking from a religious standpoint, I'm talking about from a human standpoint, you know? None of us are perfect, you guys have made mistakes in your life, we've all made mistakes. And yeah, there's a bunch of people that need to be in jail, they're bad people, they hurt people, and they do really bad things. But there's a lot of people that don't need to be looked at like that, and maybe we all need to get together and think creatively. I'm a musician, I'm an artist, I think about things creatively. And I do think about things with a little bit more emotion than you guys do, you guys are like cold, hard numbers people, okay? And that's cool, maybe there's a place in the world for for both of us, but we all need a place at the table. And this so-called representative government, there's nobody up here that represents me, I represent myself, and I know you don't like hearing me talk, but I'm here to represent myself, okay? And I think you guys need to think about it, because I know what you're doing, and Marilyn, Paul, I don't know you, but, you know, I have concerns that maybe you're going to get a contract, your son is going to get a contract with the the millwork and the cabinetry, maybe you say, you say you're not going to. Marilyn, are you guys going to get the beef contract? You know, for for feeding the inmates? I don't know, none of us know, people speculate, but can you sign a contract and promise the people that you're not going to profit off of this thing? It's not about profit. Is it really for the good of the county, or is it for the good of you? Is it really for the good of the county, or is it for the good of you? That's what I want to know. And that's what I think we all want to know, and I think that's fair, for us to want to know that stuff. I, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. I'm Jim Ellingson.
Could you say your name one more time?
Jim Ellingson.
Thank you.
And I appreciate your time. I feel somewhat that I've been bamboozled tonight, and let me tell you why. The last time we met, I was told that my property tax would increase 100%. And I thought, okay, I pay 1,700 a year, so I'll be paying 3,400. I can afford that, but there's people in the community that can't. Now, tonight, we were shown a graph, and I calculated on that graph that my taxes will only increase $153. Which is it?
It's the $153 if your home's worth $405,000. The notice that, John, you dress it, you know?
I'm going to disabuse you of this notion. Yeah, a lot of people thought their taxes would double, that was never the case. We shouted it from the rooftops. It was about a 10% increase, so...
No, that's not true.
It is true.
I was at the last meeting, and that is not true.
No, we, we've been very consistent, and...
No.
It's the line item, Jim. The line item, the county levy was going to go up about 90, what was it, 97%? That was that one line item.
Just the one line.
Put up, we can put up that chart.
Yeah, yeah. So, a lot of people thought that, it was never correct. The little notice that was sent out had to do with one of the levies on, on our tax. A levy is the individual taxes. The irony is, the county is the tax collector for multiple entities. So we collect for the school board, the school district, or the, the cities, the, the water board. And you can kind of see on the screen here, the Iron County General Fund, and, and interestingly, my house is almost exactly like this, so my, my house is worth about 405 this year. So, that 185 was the increase. It was never going to double. A lot of people thought that, they were wrong. The reason it's a little bit lower, not, you, we weren't going to pay half, and all of a sudden it's only 153 on, on the average home, it's that the, the financing for a general obligation bond, which is the kind that go on the, on the ballot, is a, a little bit more favorable as far as interest rates. So, if you, if you go to the GO bond option, it changes it to 153. The other thing is, the county had also included some money to keep the lights on as, as we're, we're hoping to be able to do now going this option. So it was never, ever going to double, and people did unfortunately think that it was not correct. It had to do, it had to do with the fact that we collect the taxes, but we're actually one of the smaller levies on, on individual tax bills. And so when that effectively doubled, that meant it went from 185 to another 185, so 353 if you, if you look here. And this is numbers that Luke put together today. So, that was the confusion. It was never going to double everyone's taxes, it was going to double essentially that one relatively small levy. And now with the GO bond, it, it, it went from that to this.
How many beds do we currently have in this prison, or jail?
254.
254? How many inmates are in there tonight?
I don't know the exact numbers. We can house up to 180 before we're totally full.
How many beds will be in the proposed prison?
What's that?
How many beds will be in the proposed prison?
A little over 600 if we build two pods.
Over 600.
But you have to remember that what we're doing is building for the future. If you look at Washington County is a really good example. When Washington County 20 years ago was half the size that it currently is, when they, for the last 10 years, Washington, Washington County has added to add on to their jail every single year, including this year. They're, right now, they're in design phases for an additional...
100 beds.
100 beds. Because they, they never planned for the future, and as a result, they can't keep up with their own growth.
They have golf carts, they load their mills on, on a train of golf carts and, and drive them around. It's, it's very inefficient the way it's, the way it's happened, because they, they haven't planned.
And it's extremely staff intensive, extremely staff intensive.
I heard a statistic, and I'm sure you'll correct me if I'm wrong, in 2011, 4,500 inmates went in and out of our jail in 2011. And then in 2020, 1,200 did. Why such a decrease of inmates?
Do you know anything about that, Sean?
No, I don't know. Where did you get those statistics?
Um, they were passed around in a meeting I attended the other night.
Well, I, I would be careful of, of numbers that can't be substantiated. I, I have no idea where they've come up with those numbers.
Let's say it's true, or somewhere near. And we're building a prison that'll take 600 at a time? I just think, it's crazy. I just think for a community this small, we, we pass around these terms that are inmate revenue, the money we'll gain from prisoners coming to us. I, for one, as a member of this community, don't want that. I don't want all these inmates coming to our community. I, I don't know why that's a good idea. We don't earn enough money to make it such a big cash cow for our community. I've heard the term tonight, two times, that this is mandated, and then I've heard the term tonight, three times, that we have to do this.
We do. We're out of space, our jail's falling apart. We have to do it.
So we build a monstrous thing for this? This is a little community, this isn't a giant community.
It is today.
Look at the monstrous building that we're proposing on our backs. I just disagree. I think it's way out of scale for this community. I'm against inmate revenue, bringing inmates from other communities into our community. As you can hear, people agree with that. There, there's a term that says, when people fear their government, there's tyranny, but when the government fears the people, then you have freedom and justice. This is a monster that somebody's created that is, is crazy. I'm in construction. This building's crazy, and the, the financial impact is ridiculous.
Thank you, Jim. Sir, just a moment, Mike would like to speak.
It's Mike Gibbs, I'm Iron, Maintenance Supervisor of the jail. It's, that seems crazy, the current jail when it was built in 1987 was a joint between the state and county. At that time, we had 50 beds for county inmates, and everybody said that will last us 50 years. We had 50 beds about 37 years ago. We since have turned every spare space into a dorm and bought out the state's portion to go to over, um, to 250 beds, and we're out of space 37 years later. So yes, this might seem like monstrosity, but we're growing faster than ever, crime's moving in faster than ever, and I think this will be full in 10 years. And if we don't build it now, we're going to go through this all over again. It's proven on the previous one, I'm the one that started this because I took the numbers from the last 28 years, and it said, if those numbers continue with the standard growth we had when I started this 10 years ago, we would be out of trouble time, that we would be in trouble before this jail's built. And if it wasn't for COVID, we were already in trouble before COVID. So yes, it seems like a monstrosity, but the history of our county proves it's not.
How you guys doing? I'm just gonna turn around here and just...
You gotta talk into the mic, though.
Taking inventory. Hi back there, Dave.
Could you state your name, sir, please?
Yes, my name is Jason Brewer, okay? And, we're, I, I just, I just want to start out by saying that I work, I've worked, happened to have landed in youth residential treatment centers for like the last eight years of my life. I, I worked with your daughter-in-law at Renewed Hope, Renewed Hope Ranch, right? And so I work with teen girls. I, last night, we had two of our girls run from the facilities out at Havenwood, and I think I've seen my, are, are you law enforcement out there? We, we get kids that run from our facilities.
Not, not last night.
Okay, yeah, I've probably seen you around. And I, I just, so I guess my experience with, you know, I, I kind of, I'm, I'm going the mental health route, you know, with crime and stuff like that. And I'm just going to point out that there's, there's a, there's a binary thinking that I'm, I'm navigating and that I'm kind of seeing here, right? Where it's, you know, we could either villainize you guys, right? And, and we could be victims, or you guys could victim, victimize yourselves, and we could be, you know, like the bad guys, like shame on us, because, you know, I don't know, it's, 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 but I, you know, we're, we're neighbors, and, you know, I voted for Paul and Marilyn, and, and there's, there's bigger themes, too. I, I'm, my wife is from Peru, okay? I'm, I'm from an immigrant family. And the topic of immigration on a bigger level, you know, when, when you started talking Biden, and, you know, there's, there's bigger themes than are just in this little Cedar City here in, in Iron County, right? And, but with Jim, with Jim Ellis, that's your name, right? Is Jim, did Jim, you still here? You know, I'm just kind of coming from this, from, my wife and I moved down years ago, we lived in the basement of an old farmhouse, okay? We were paying 100 bucks a month rent, and we finally were able to crawl out of that and eke out, you know, we bought a piece of real estate that had a whole bunch of Milwaukee's Best beer cans on it, that we cleaned up, and, you know, we're finally into a situation where we're, you know, we're not like gasping for air with every year's tax returns. And, so I'm just, I, I also just wanted to point out that I, I created with, with some people here that I've had the opportunity to meet, it's kind of pulled us together, to be honest. But I have a, a Facebook group called Iron County Tax Watch, that this, these events kind of spurred, and I, this is like the third meeting that I've come to, and so we drive down and we're sitting here, and, and what Dave was saying, we're, we're sitting here and we're like listening to all these details and stuff, and I, I get, the devil's in the details, and I get lost. And I'm like, I can't, I can't act on this, right? But I do know that I don't want my taxes increased, and I also know, like many people have said, that we recognize that there's needs for, you know, law enforcement, right? To have your accommodations, to, to have what you guys need. And I just feel, though, like there, that there's just something, there's, there's more innovative things that can happen with technology, the way it is now, and things like that. I just, you know, and I, and I'm not all or nothing, okay? I just, I'm not all or nothing. And, and I think a lot of us feel that way. You know, we want things to be nice, but yes, what Jim said, I couldn't agree more. You know, the temple that was up, that's up on our hill, okay, was how much? Does anybody of us know what the budget was for that? I mean, I, I looked it up, and I found somewhere between 7 to 70 million dollars. Okay, so, I just, I just ask myself, what does that say about us when our prison, or our jail, sorry, I don't know all these technical terms, but when, when our jail is the most expensive, you know, five-star hotel in town, what is our most expensive five-star hotel? What was it built for?
We don't have a...
Yeah, we don't have a five-star hotel.
That's making it different.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's, you know, this is like, I mean, rolling out the red carpet for people who are criminals. And I, and I'm going, you know, this is just backwards. So, I just, you know, my friend's Oscar Fakahua, I don't know, what, anybody, yeah, he's worked with youth for a long time, and he came to my facility where I was working before. He took a $2 stick from Home Depot, and he did more with a $2 stick from Home Depot in a group therapy session than what I saw rolling through thousands of dollars of therapists and, and everything else. And I just think that there's innovative ways that we can take advantage of technology, we could do neighborhood crime watch things, we could do, there's just other things that are on the table that we could consider and slow down and, and get some things together to where we could actually decrease taxes instead of increasing them. So, I, you know, anyway. Thanks, everybody, too, for showing up, and sorry for taking your time. I, you know, we, we, we need to have more ears, I think, and anybody's welcome to go on, onto the Facebook page and say whatever you'd like to say there. And we're trying to streamline things so it's easier for us, so we don't have to come to these meetings and sit here for hours and listen to irrelevant information. So, anyway, have a good night.
Good morning, excuse me, good evening, I'm Laura Henderson. I'm going to be a little more concise and to the point.
What was your name, again?
Laura Henderson.
Laura Henderson.
Yes. So I, first of all, I wanted to say that I am not, I am pro-back-to-blue, I'm pro-law enforcement. But like the other taxpayers in this room, we talk a lot about housing prisoners, and we heard at the last large meeting, how many people were on fixed incomes and how that increase would affect them, okay? And any increase, whether it's $153 and some change or not, that's affecting people. So, you're talking to working-class people who really, they're not prisoners, and to keep throwing the Constitution in our face, saying that we are constitutionally mandated to provide, you know, jails, we all get that already, we don't need to have that shoved down our throats. But I think it was very egregious when you went ahead and purchased property for a jail that you didn't really have funding for. You didn't, you didn't have funding for the jail, you bought the property with money you had, but you didn't have money for a jail. And then you came with the truth and taxation garbage and tried to shove it down our throats. I think if you had re-approached that, you probably would have gotten a much better response, and done a little more thinking on, on how to approach the public with a project like this. And I agree, I think the, the two pods is a little much. I think our, our prison population, or our jail population went down last year instead of up, and who knows why that is? I don't know, maybe prisoners are getting a conscience. But I do know that this community has to feed themselves, they have to house themselves, they have to provide for their children, so I don't think a prison is a real priority for a lot of people. Even though it may be an inevitability, it, you're, you're preaching to a choir that's got to pay their bills. So I think that, that the way that this was handled was not handled well. You don't shove things down people's throats and then come back and try to backpaddle to make it right. You could throw statistics at people all day long, all you want, and all they hear is wah, 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 we want more of your tax money. So please, I, I really, I don't see this happening when we go to vote for this come November. And if you have to bring it back next year, and the year after that, and the year after that, it may not succeed. But I, but it also was curious to me that if you knew 10 years ago that we needed a new jail, why were we incrementally taxing us, you know, to get to that point, increasing... Increasing our tax incrementally instead of just saying, surprise, we're gonna hit you with a big one? That isn't working either in this community. So let's start thinking smarter, using better common sense and realizing that most of the people are prisoners. So we really don't have a vested interest in a lot of that. It's not that we don't support law enforcement, it's just we gotta feed our families and pay our own bills too. So thank you.
Hi, Jeff Disney. Um, I registered here and it said, uh, representing, so I put homeowners. I'm representing homeowners. And, and that's for the most part, everybody that keeps showing up here is homeowners. Is that pretty much true?
Yes.
Okay. And the load, people who are homeowners, as you all are, are responsible people. And like she just said, it's the homeowners who are probably not gonna be actually in the facility. I'm just so tired, I just, I'm, it's kind of an elephant in a room that nobody's saying. Um, I'm just really tired of paying for everybody else's screw-ups, including the people in the jail. It's, it's not that I don't love them. I do a Bible study at the Detention Center for the Boys. I do love them. I care about them. And the Lord loves them. That's really important. But I am just so tired of this government, and I'm not talking about you guys, but it does fall in that category of the government always having me pay for everybody else's stuff. I'm so tired of that. I work my tail off. So many people here who are homeowners have, and that's the back you're putting this on. So I move to solutions and that includes, uh, what Luke brought up, and that was the 1% use tax, right? Was it 1%? And, uh, 1% didn't quite cover it. Is that correct? It was about half of it.
Yeah.
Okay. If, if my math is right and 1% is half of it, let's do 2%. And then the people who are actually in the jail will actually be helping to pay for the jail because they will spend money and pay the tax instead of always putting it on the people who are probably never gonna be in the jail. You follow what I'm saying? Does this make sense? I'm really tired of paying for everybody else's stuff all the time. I'm okay with 2%. Now, will that pass? I don't know. I don't think this is gonna pass. I think, I think you've made the case, especially, especially you, sir, uh, that, that this is reasonable. I see two pods up there. I see another circle there, is that for a third pod?
Uh, yeah.
It could be. For the future.
For the future. Okay. Well, you know, it, it looks to me like if that's reasonable to have a third pod there, it's actually reasonable to have just one right now. And then maybe Luke moved a second one later and a third one. And I get that the prices are gonna go up and everything, but also I'm just, I'm just tired, it's only 12 bucks a month, I get that. I can afford it, but I'm tired of it. I want some of the people who are gonna be using the facility, that help us, the rest of us, pay for this facility instead of the responsible people who have managed to buy a house. That's what we're doing here. The people who've been responsible enough to buy a house get to pay for something that never gives. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Susan Seppi. Um, I just, mine is gonna be very brief as well. Um, a while ago, the week after the meeting on August the 15th, I got a call from Sheriff Carpenter and he invited me to the jail. I'd never been in a jail before, so I thought, well, why not? I'll go see the horrific conditions there. I did go there. Yes, the jail is old. The jail needs some work. I think that maintenance has been negligent in doing the things that needed to be done in order to keep it on, uh, compliant with laws and with code. However, this is not why I'm up here to speak. I'm up here to speak about the fact that Ms. Wood, Commissioner Wood, had said that she had gone through the jail and she had saw the horrific conditions. Well, I did some research in regards to poverty here in Iron County. Iron County is seventy-three point eighty-six percent higher than any other county in the state. Um, that's a very sad statement. And you know what would keep me up at night, Commissioner Wood? It's not the prisoners who committed crimes that are in jail and may have to suffer a little bit. They don't have all the luxuries in life that are afforded to others. But what would keep me up at night is those people who can no longer afford rent or will have to sell their home in order to, um, make ends meet. They're already strapped. This economy is not the time to do this size of a, of a jail. I agree with, uh, Sheriff Carpenter. We do need a facility. We do support law enforcement. My group and I are not opposed to law enforcement or opposed to a jail, but all we're asking right now is that you go back and you reconsider the magnitude of this jail. And maybe for a year until things change in Washington, and who knows what's gonna happen with all the trauma that's going on around the world. But I say, wait, wait another year. And you know what? You could probably come back to us if the economy's better and we're all doing well and this will pass. All I'm asking you is to consider the consensus of people who live here. And the people who live here are not living in high standards and they cannot afford this magnitude of a jail. So if they can't feed theirselves, I have no sympathy for people who are in jail right now, who committed a crime against humanity and that's why they're there. Thank you very much.
I'd like to address that just for a minute. We started this process, what was it, as long as I've been on the commission, we started the first year. And that's when Commissioner Blake talked about the Smead site and the public clamor was so intense that we, and that, the, the economy was good then. It was very good. And interest rates were at all-time low. And that's why we were pushing hard and fast to get something going so we could lock in that rate. And I talked to bond counsel the other day and they said delaying this project two years, just not only in construction increases, but in financing, our payment went from would have been four point six million to five point six million. So in 30-year, the years it's cost the taxpayers thirty million dollars. So we did try to build this jail when the economy was good and interest rates were low.
My name is Jeanne Bartholomew.
Speak right into it.
All right. Um, I worked for the county and I've worked for the county for 15 years. I have taken minutes, probably for, for the last, how long have you been in there, John, for?
Ten years.
Ten years. I have taken minutes. And of those 10 years, probably majority of them, I would guess at least nine of those years this jail has been spoken about and has been brought up. I have taken the minutes. Dave, and who's the other, Jim, I don't know if he's still here, you. You said that they're telling lies. And I'm sorry, I sit there and I think you guys are idiots. These people up here have worked their butts off to do the best that they could do for Iron County and for you guys. And for you to sit here and call them liars. Yes, you did. You called, you, you said they lied. You said, I'm talking. You came up here and you said that the last meeting, they, that the last meeting you went to, they said your taxes would be increased by 100%. Now they're saying 153. He said that you didn't do that and you said you lied. That was true. I have minutes written, 10 years' worth of minutes written about the cost of this jail and what every single commissioner has gone through to get to this point. What Sheriff Carpenter has gone through to get to this point. I live right down from the current facility. My kids have all gone to all three schools, Fiddler's, Canyon View High School, Canyon View Middle School. Never once, and I know you're all say you're for law enforcement, never once have we've gotten a phone call to say we need to lock our doors down because there's escaped prisoner. First of all, it's not a prison, it's a jail. The schools, my kids, I've been, my oldest is 40 years old, 41 years old now, and I've got four children, they've all gone, my grandchildren are going. Never have had the sheriff come down and tell us to lock down. Never have the schools been locked down because of who is in the jail or who have escaped from the jail. Now those schools are being locked down and shut down because of the way that things are running in our community at this point. We can't keep people in the jails because there's no room. My property taxes will go up also. I have to feed my family. I have to watch my grandchildren grow up in this community. And I want them to grow up safe. I don't want them to have to worry. If I can't, if they, people can't afford to live and if I can afford to do it, I help out. I don't put it on the shoulders of these people up here. I go out and I do my part to help other people. All these questions that are asked and you talk about these people up here repeating and repeating and repeating and repeating, coming to these meetings, that's because they have to repeat and repeat and repeat because no one is listening to what they're trying to tell you. They're not trying to take your money away. They're not trying to make everybody poor. My property taxes, I looked at my taxes, to pay for this jail would be less for me than what the school board is asking at this point. My taxes are going higher next year because of the school board, not because of the jail. Nobody thinks about that part of it. I read on Facebook, oh, school's not going up, they're bond, they're doing seventy-five million dollar bond, but that's not gonna affect us whatsoever. It is gonna affect. It's not gonna up this year, but it will go up next year and then it will stay level again.
It was supposed to go up last year and now it won't go up at all.
Exactly. But they need, I know, the same thing, but people don't think that that's, that that's gonna affect their property taxes. It is. If you want to, if any of these, all these questions that everybody's asking and everything that people's concerned about, I'm concerned about it. They're concerned about it. You yell at Marilyn. Marilyn has almost been in tears because of this. I've watched her, I sit over here and I just wanna, I don't know what else we need to do. I watch our, you talk about employees needing money, so you know what? I have a family, I have to live, the economy is improving. All of us here, can every one of you here afford right now where you're living? Do you pay your bills? I bet you do. Do you buy your groceries? Yeah, you buy your groceries. Do you help your neighbors if they need to? Yes, you help your neighbors if they need to. The same as every single person in this county would do. I love Iron County, but I don't want Iron County to be turning into a St. George, to a Salt Lake City. We have a jail rat now. I don't want it to turn into a prison. The farther we grow, the more we grow, the farther we wait, the farther we wait, the longer we wait. If my child committed a crime and they had to go to jail, I wouldn't want them in a place, even though I love them with all my heart, I wouldn't want them in a place that has sewage backing up to make them sick and end up in a hospital. And I agree, I think 100%, they need to put old people in jail and they need to put the prisoners in an old folks' home because they get treated better in jail than they do at an old folks' home. But we can't fix it by complaining, we can only fix it by doing. And if everybody wants to complain, but nobody has the idea to come up. And I have listened to them and listened to them, these three commissioners, I've listened to the three commissioners before that, I've listened to the three commissioners before that and the two before that that replaced them. And they have exhausted and exhausted and exhausted ways to fund this jail. And they care about you guys. They care about every one of us. And I think we need to at least give them credit for that. It's not their fault that, that we are in this position. It's not your fault that we're in this position. It's no one's fault, except maybe the president. We can complain, but there's nothing we can change about that except for vote them out. But even, it's, it's, the way our government is being run this, this time, it's not, we can't keep blaming each other and you can't keep coming up here and yelling at these people up here for wanting to do the best thing that they could do for Iron County and that is why they're here. They don't wanna do this, they don't want people mad at them, they don't wanna go to bed at night and cry because, maybe I'm crying on their behalf, I'm sorry, but I love these people up here and I love Iron County. And I know we need this new jail, but there's got to be some way, we've got to be able to bend and make amends somehow. And if you have, like they said, if you have a way to do this and we had a way to do it right now, then tell us. Tell us when we can get this money. I looked up on the computer to try to find grants, anything to help these people out so they wouldn't get bombarded tonight. And I know you don't feel like you have enough time to speak, but every time, even when you get up to talk, you're asking the same questions over and over again and they try to answer those questions. But you have to give them credit or credit is due. They do their best, just as every single one of us do our best. And it will be a hardship for me, it'll be a very hard hardship for me, but I will do what I need to do to survive. I will do what I have to do to help my neighbors if I need to, to get through this. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
We can't hear and we can't see with these spotlights in our eyes. Sorry.
My name is Carson Barlow. And I want to have my voice heard here and now that I really do appreciate this commission and the sheriff and everybody that's been involved. I believe that you have watched out for my checkbook, for the, my take-home pay money that I have to support my family. I believe it with all of my heart. I came to the first meeting because I was upset because my taxes were going to double. When I finally got the correct information and realized what was going on, I realized that this commission is doing everything they possibly know how to do to keep my taxes as low as possible. And I make you this prediction, if the people in this county do not pass this jail bond and get this jail built, within five years, it will be mandated by the state and it will be shoved down our throats from the state, not from the county level. And Iron County taxes will be the highest tax in the state. Mark my word, I promise you that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Everybody for your comments. I've gotta clear one thing up. Mr. Williams claimed that I was gonna profit personally from this jail construction. When I was elected a commissioner, I sold my business to my son and I instructed him that he will not bid projects for Iron County as long as I'm in office. That's clear. The only thing I've ever done in this is serving.
The only thing I've ever done in this, is serving as a commissioner, is I've donated my time, we need to do cabinets in the, in the, in the building department office, I went down and I measured those, I designed them on my CAD system, and they were put out to bid by the building department, and my company did not bid on that, or my son's company did not bid on that. I've done other projects where I've helped design, I've, I've done some small projects for our county when they needed help, sneeze guards when COVID hit, I donated my time to help build some of those, 'cause they needed it quickly, nobody had time. So I just wanna make, make sure that's very clear. Does, does anybody else have anything? And I don't think Marilyn's in the food business.
I'm not in the food business, although I do feed these guys quite regularly.
Yeah, she is good.
But our businesses aren't anything to do with, I mean, we're ranchers, and so, I don't know, I guess, he thinks, well, I'm gonna feed him, but we don't do that kinda cattle, so, and, uh, and our, and our welding business, we don't do any of that kinda work either, we fix trailers and trucks, so, I don't know what he thought that we were going to profit from. We, we're not those kinda people, and I'm insulted for him to, to throw that accusation to us. I thought that was awful.
I will say a couple of things, though. I mean, if this is passed, one of the things that it will do is generate money for our economy. You know, we've been looking at, at subcontracting out as much of this as can be subcontracted from late in construction, and they've already taken bids for concrete from two local companies. All that money would stay right here in Iron County. One of the things that we've looked at is, is the concrete cells that would be made. There's three companies that make those cells. Two of them make them in their home states and then transport them to be put in place, but the company that, that we're seriously looking at would come in here and build them on-site and use all local materials to be able to build them. That's money that's coming right back into our economy. You know, we've had people that have, have basically said that we're trying to profiteer this, we're not trying to profiteer this at all, but here's the fact, on fate, federal and state inmates, you're paying for it already out of your, out of your taxes. You're paying for the housing of those inmates wherever they're housed. By bringing them in here, we're taking some of your tax money and returning it to your economy, rather than having it go out into other counties and other states. We're trying to do everything that we can to safeguard our economy and our taxpayers and meet the needs that we're required to meet. We're trying to take as much of the tax burden off of the taxpayer as we possibly can, not put it on you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments from this? If not, we'll appreciate your attendance tonight very much, and your comments, and we'll declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you. [applause]